Any order? So the flag allegiance.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, welcome everybody. My son, it's on.
Jack, Jack.
Alright, we have a fifteen minute public cabinet period regarding agenda items, anybody? Alrighty. I'm looking for a resolution to approve the minutes for May twenty eighth, June nineteenth, and July tenth.
So.
Second by Melanie, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. Need a resolution accepting the resignation of George Triponee from the Rec Association.
So move. Second, I would like to say that George has been an excellent board member. And it's a real loss to the community, to the Recreation Commission. And that a letter of thanks being posted to him. They're moving out of the area.
He's been out there a long time?
Long time.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. I need a resolution to appoint Janelle Hammack to the Board of Assessment Review to fill up recently become vacant.
Second.
Mel. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstent or against, abstentions, so carry. I need a resolution accepting the FY two thousand seventeen Town of Messina Audit and authorizing the staff to remit payment to Bowers and Company CPAs in accordance with the terms set forth in Town of Messina Resolution Number ninety-three dash two zero one seven.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. Need a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign the FAA documented category categorical exclusion form for GA apron rehabilitation at the Messina Airport.
So move. Second.
Al. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. I'm looking for the same KTEX form for the ARF as a rebuilding expansion at the Messina Airport. So move.
Second.
Seconded by Melanie. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. I'm looking for a resolution to authorize me to execute the following grant agreement. This is for Airport Improvement Program, project number three dash thirty-six dash zero five four dash zero seven nine dash two zero nineteen. Rehabilitate the terminal apron.
So move.
Second.
Second by Sam. Or Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. Alright, I'm looking for four authorizations to execute the following grant agreement. This is the Airport Improvement Program, project number three dash thirty-six dash zero zero five four dash zero eight one dash two thousand nineteen. Rehabilitate the terminal access and route.
So move.
Second.
Frank, these are all part of the Capitol.
Yep. Capitol, so they're on airports, yeah.
Does that?
FA, FA grant.
Does that come close to finishing us off for this year?
These are, these are.
For the previous?
These are for next year.
Next year, yep.
These are twenty, twenty and twenty twenty-one that we're starting work on. What we have left for this year is we still have to do the, we're just gonna start next week, Taxi, Taxiway A Phase Two project starts next week. And, um, what was I talking about?
Okay, okay.
The parking lot project, the bids, we received one bid, that's New York State grant. Don't know if they'll accept the one bid, but the money that was allotted was three hundred eighty-six thousand, came in at three hundred eighty thousand, we're short forty thousand dollars for inspection and oversight. So we have to make a decision on that project. We either do the base bid and, you know, take whatever we can from the grant and/or we, you know, decide we gotta come up with money, but it's gotta be approved, it's all in New York State DOT right now along with the fuel truck. We're just waiting for them to say okay or not, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah.
About our budget reports.
Okay. What were you gonna say? About the CFA grant for the fishing school. Last year, we applied for CFA grant for fishing school, which is a part of another part, another piece of the puzzle, what we're trying to do here to increase tourism. And we made it to the final stage and Linda McQuinn wrote the grant for us out of the goodness of her own heart, we made it to the final stage. And she actually went to a follow-up to find out what happened to, why we didn't get awarded the grant. So I'd like to pack, I'd like to bring up a resolution to apply for that CFA grant again. She, she's done her homework, she's found out what she needs to improve on and, again, this is a big part of the puzzle, so if this board would approve, I'd like to make a resolution that we apply for that grant again. It's through Market.
Market New York.
Market New York. And Linda is here tonight to answer questions, or she can just briefly talk about it for you guys, if you wanna hear from here first, or?
Yes.
Okay. The Market New York program is a subset, if you will, of Empire State Development. And last year was the first year that they had funds available for programs like this. And the fishing school concept was something for which we thought Messina could apply. So we did apply for the grant and scored very well at the local level. It was not reviewed here locally in St. Lawrence County, but it went to another part of the state where it was reviewed and, and scored the full allocation of twenty points. It then went on to the state level and they review it according to criteria that have been established in the Regional Economic Development Council that's in the North Country. So when it went to the state level, it, it didn't score as favorably as we might have hoped, simply because we didn't put enough emphasis on the regional component. We looked more at Messina because Messina really was, was at the forefront of making this application and doing the work. So I've, I've had a debriefing session with Market New York staff. They're telling me that if we create a better premise, if you will, in terms of the regional concept and how it will benefit the North Country, they feel that it will be successful. So I'm asking if the town board would be willing to go forward with that. Now, Tom, you'd asked me earlier about what the budget was. Budget for this project will be approximately a hundred and four thousand dollars. And this is a seventy-five twenty-five split with the town paying out twenty-five percent of the total and then Market New York paying the remaining seventy-five percent. So this is something where there could be a good deal of money coming into the community with limited investment on the town department.
I'll second your motion now.
Do we have the resolution?
Well, it was a live resolution last year.
The, and the resolution was, I didn't, I didn't resend it.
Right, yep.
To who?
I got it.
Nice, you got it.
But I wrote it down. Just resolution to apply for the grant, Market Grant for the fishing school, with a seventy-five twenty-five match.
Where are you getting the money from?
Well.
And when is, when is it due, when is it?
It's due next Friday.
Right, same thing, but I guess when would we have to pay the?
When we actually start to school.
Contracts would not be signed probably until January. They'll make award announcements in December. So it would be twenty twenty when the work would, would start.
He seconded.
Okay.
Any further discussion? The question was, what, where we, what would we take the money from?
There's, I, in my opinion, as one board member, we got high water money. We have a tourism budget that we use.
Compact money.
Compact money, which is supposed to be used for economic development. So, I mean, that's up to you guys, you'll be here in two thousand twenty, I won't, so. I mean, but I could see it coming out of one of those three, but that's up to you guys.
We'll just have to put it in the, my, my, put it in the budget, the budget, just to put that in there, the document. Thank you Linda for doing your, for your time into it.
Thank you, Dr.
Doctor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry.
RBRD.
Oh.
As the board members probably know, we got awarded twenty thousand dollars for a grant that was written by Jim Murphy and Tony Zapio for the dog training grounds. They were just twenty thousand dollars, there's no match to that. So I guess the next phase of that out there is to do the rest of the clearing and all the groundwork to it and put up a safety fence. That is going to cost roughly somewhere in the high twenties. Several years ago, I believe it was two years ago, this board passed a resolution to spend fifteen thousand dollars on the training grounds. At this point in time, we've only spent, I believe it was five thousand four hundred some dollars. We, and all the rest have been volunteer hours and all that, so I would also like to add that, the remainder of that resolution, roughly ten thousand, to this project. Now, I'm not saying it's gonna take all that, but to get the final project with that company, that contract company coming in, doing all that groundwork and then putting, installing the safety fence, I, I think it will take a little over the twenty, twenty thousand that we were awarded, so I'm asking the board to allow, be allowed to use that remainder of that ten thousand that we voted on two years ago, about fifteen. So I don't know if that has to be a resolution, I just wanted to bring it up to you guys to see if we can go ahead and put that all together and get this next phase done.
Where is that money?
That, that rolled over into the fund balance, right, so a couple of years ago when you guys put that.
We just have money on the excavator rental, right?
Right, that's the only thing we have right now, we don't have any operator costs and all everything.
It rolled over into the fund balance. So it's still there, the money's still there, it just rolls into fund balance, you don't use it all by the end of the year.
Can you help make that in the motion?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. We have to make a amendment of resolution. Actually, a resolution seventy-two from April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, meant it's to correct the payment amount from fifty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars to fifty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents.
Fifty-one cents.
Well, it says sixty-three in here. You don't want me to, let's get it right so we don't have to amend it again next time.
Sixty-one cents.
Sixty-one.
Yeah.
What's that for Steve, that was for the attorney that, for the hospital?
Dollar difference.
Well, it is.
You okay?
Half of the bill.
Yeah, the amendment's a dollar difference or?
It was just round, keep rounding it up, have had the exact, that's all that is.
Gotcha.
And where it's coming.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's coming out of the high water.
I won. So who, who's, do you second? Sam and Melanie.
Alrighty, transfer this into amendments.
I make a motion to transfer amendments, be approved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry.
Go ahead, Albert.
The bills are signed, I've motioned to make a motion to approve warrants.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so carry. Financial reports for June. Committee reports.
Highway, county paving crew is supposed to be here on the first of August for paving the Hamlet Road, Agrostock and the Turf Administration Road. County painting crew finished up repainting our roads a week ago. And the EWR Extreme Winter Recovery for chips was put back into the New York State budget, so we will receive an additional sixteen thousand three hundred and twelve dollars for road work this year. We originally took it out and they put it back in. The airport, the fence project, we were asked to rebid that by the FAA because we only got the one bid and came in at one point three million. And right now, the, the grant is for five hundred and forty thousand dollars, we rebid it, it came back in at one point three million. We've been asked to put that in the Airport CIP for two thousand twenty, which will, we will have to add or ask for additional funds to support that project. I talked about the parking lot, I talked about the fuel truck. We did submit the one and only bid we got to the FAA for the new ARF truck, so we're just waiting for their approval on that. Obviously, when everything's signed and done, you're talking three hundred and sixty days for delivery before you can see the truck. And the Taxiway A Phase Two project starts July twenty-second, this coming Monday. And airport revenue, airport revenue generated for June of two thousand nineteen was eighty-seven thousand dollars. Town Hall, we had an internal inspection on our boiler, found no issues, it's good to go, that's all I got.
Is it worthy to do a portion of that fence or half of it or?
No, the FAA won't, they won't, either you got, yeah, all or none, so.
But is that, I mean, that's not the whole fence?
No, no.
It's just the?
It's the sections that are heaved and are coming out of the ground, so. No, it's either you have to do, you know, either the project can be done as whole or it can be divided up. They just, they, they, they won't accept the single bid, if they typically don't.
Is your reason why those folks were heaving in a wet area or?
It's, it's in a wet area, it's wetlands and the frost. There's several sections of fence that have been redone where we don't, they don't use, they don't use concrete, they ride the post in, and that's turned out to be a lot better.
Yep.
And we're going to, the DEC was here this week, there's a, there's an idea that once the fence is installed, we will lay fiber board down, insulated board over it to try to reduce the penetration. And the DEC, we're trying to get them to approve that because it's in wetlands. So they came and looked at the areas where we wanna do it this week, so.
Have a, have a system where you mix up foam, you put a hole around the post there, put foam in there, I just wonder if that would be a better, you know, insulated value as well, rather than concrete, use foam.
Well, we, the concrete won't be used again, yeah. This is driving me.
But the foam would be a place where the concrete normally would be.
Airport, Albert and I attended the TSA quarterly meeting along with Frank and Sean. All went well, a lot of good communication, so there's that issue, there's no issues with TSA, they're extremely happy, they had their inspection yesterday and our quarterly meeting today, so. Final thing, the open house car show is August twenty-fourth, rain date twenty-fifth. I hope everybody in this room will attend and I hope the board members will be here. Again, last year was a great turnout and I'm, we're all hoping for the same this year. Um, that was a.
Do we all get a golf cart like you do or?
Mr. Supervisor, if you'd like your own golf cart, you can have one, I'll bring my own.
Still a politician after all this.
There was an issue brought to me about a lady that was flying out of boutique, the flight was delayed and the, the policy for TSA is that once they screen the passengers, they get the sterile area, due to the shortness of their staff, they leave. So the passengers cannot leave that area. Well, this she, this lady came to me and said she waited three and a half hours, the plane was delayed. And she could not change her flight because it was due to a death in the family, so she needed to get there. So she stayed there. And today I brought it up at the meeting, I asked the policy of the TSA and that's what they told me, they shortened budgets, they said, they were told they had to cut, so as soon as they screened, they get the sterile area, they're, they can leave after the shift. So if the passengers to leave, then they can't get on that flight because they can't get re-screened. She, it actually explained that the seats that are in that area are metal seats. The TV stays on one channel. And I did find out boutique does bring refreshments to their passengers if it's delayed. I don't know what happened there, she, because she said that there was no vending machines in there, and there's not.
There's not.
There's no vending machines in there.
We had to remove that.
Right, so, but in the meantime, TSA said that they would bring, improve that, put a coffee station in there, they would possibly, I think it was Frank that might suggest that possibly offering them chips, peanuts, candy bars, something while they're waiting. And so, in talking to Albert and Frank, I would like to see if there's some money left in the airport, that some better seating be put in that area for the case of this, that if the flight is delayed and they have to sit in there. And I'd also like to see if there's money to purchase a flat screen TV, the one they have there's probably from the eighties. And there's no, the buttons are gone, you can only watch one channel, so I'd like to see if, and Frank said he'd look at the budget and he'd get with Taya and see if we could improve the seating in the area, improve the television and just try to improve that area for the, with customers and the passengers, so.
So basically purchasing some kind of, for a type of recliner type chairs or something.
Do only need eight of them.
That's right, well, they'll have to share four, four, you know. And we will remove a set of existing seating and put four recliners in other areas.
It's a long time, three and a half hours.
Yep.
It's not like a large airport where you have, you can get up and go to a restaurant or something.
So I think, and, you know, a couple of things that she mentioned to me and which, if we wanna compete with other airports around here, she talked about a charging port station and she, she was upset, so she was just going, you know, wrangling, but I, I felt for her, she had three and a half hours and she couldn't cancel, she had to get there.
Three and a half hours is a long time.
Yep.
There's outlets there?
Yeah.
Yep.
Maybe we could put a power strip in or something, but I don't, not every, everybody uses an actual plug this day here, I don't know if you.
One time they used just the end of the USB and just.
And is there free Wi-Fi at the airport? Okay. I just started that after.
Um, maybe boutique will pitch in on something like that too.
That's another thing.
Yeah, yeah.
They ought to know about it.
The Brian that I had been speaking to also was let go at boutique, so now I'm talking to another guy, so they've been, people have been moving from boutique or moving on to bigger airlines, I'm not sure, so. I emailed the new guy today requesting that he comes up and visits with us and that he takes part in our open house at the airport because they haven't really been part of our open house the last few years. And I believe that's one of the biggest part of our open houses, so the community can see our airport and the community can see the airline that we have. And I think with a new plane like Sam suggested last couple of months ago, would be perfect to have that plane there, but a lot of people would go on it.
Yeah, Sean would bring out the Piaggio and if they're, you know, if they're getting those FAA approved yet, if that happened, it'd be nice to see one of those appear anyway.
Will you stay on that, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Perfect.
So as far as, Albert, you want it? Do you have anything? I don't know about my hair.
Oh, I've got MED, but MED meets tomorrow. Okay, their meeting is not until tomorrow, so that's all.
They're having, they've got a char, vehicle chartering station here in the building. Wonder if they could put one out at the airport?
Could ask them tomorrow.
That's a good idea. I had an email on a electric car thing going down here, August thirtieth, it was, an email. It's the first I heard of it anyway. I don't know, it's, it's just Van Man or whatever, but it's in here in Messina.
While he's looking for that, we helped, we hosted our first fishing tournament of the year, first of four, this past weekend, and Don and Linda were there all weekend. It went off really well, we got a lot of positive feedback from all the anglers. So the overflow parking was set up, actually it'll be better parking one night because under, under bases out there, but we opened that up and it went tremendous because along with the anglers, that intake was busy, wasn't it, Don and Linda? It was crazy, there was boats going out, in and out all day, if we wouldn't have that overflow parking, there would have been some issues with parking because that's how busy it was, but it, it went perfect, nobody had an issue and they were just like clockwork getting in and out, all went well. They caught some huge fish, five point zero nine was the biggest bass and they had bags over twenty pounds, so, and these aren't, these aren't professionals, these are the amateurs, so. And, and they were seen throughout the town, the community, and so I would, I would say it was a success and we're looking forward to the next three tournaments, so.
Can I just, you said that happened this weekend?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I haven't seen anything.
You didn't see anything?
Global newspaper, today's coverage, I don't know. Okay, this is, this is where I have a problem, we have these events. I'm just.
It's been on the website, it's, it's been talked about, it's.
It was on the posters.
The posters out.
Alright, news coverage.
Brand of a reveal.
Results, you know, who won, who lost, weights, that's what they do with the wedding tournament, I don't see what's happening here.
Well, the results, the results are not up to the press yet, so don't blame them.
Okay.
And I believe it, it was put out there, I believe it was put out there pretty well, I mean, I'm not sure, to the, to the liking of him, but I think it was put out there to. to the, to the liking of him, but I think it was put out there to, uh- I'm, so, and we'll try to get better on, we'll improve.
Okay, just talking about promotion, that's all we're talking about.
So I had, uh, uh, B D C, we had the micro enterprise winter meeting, uh, last week. Also, uh, the museum, we had a dedication of the Holden Robinson, Messina Center Bridge, uh, historical monument, really good turnout out there. It was a good event, uh, and we dodged the rain on that as well. Did you want to report on the library or what we did?
No. I already had something right there, I mean, I was-
First of all, uh, barn called party, Saturday, August tenth, rain or shine, at the, uh, Nature Center. Uh, second thing is libraries starting a process and evaluating a library district, um, which will help out with funding. Maybe become autonomous, uh, structured, more structured as far as their funding and, uh, stability, so. That's, uh, being unrolled, uh, at this time. And I had, uh, two other things and they're public safety concerns. And, uh, one of those is the, uh, North Racket, had people approach me, uh, I think some of the other board members as well, and tried to get the speed reduced out there. I don't know if it'd be the entire road, there is quite a straightaway that, you know, I think we're, weren't keeping the fifty-five, but there is a section in there with a sharp curve, I've been out there before, it's difficult to get out of a driveway. There has been a lot of vehicles off the road, there has been some, uh, motor vehicle accidents out there. I think we need to relook at that again. Uh, and I suggest maybe we have a public comment period next meeting and, uh, decide what areas we think, you know, should be, uh, a little bit safer out there, Frank, I have some input on that as well.
The, the one area you're talking about right now is already forty-five miles an hour.
Where the, uh, curve is?
The problem is people don't slow down.
Oh, they don't.
You could be standing there with a flag in your hand and they go by you at seventy miles an hour.
Are you talking about the curve coming out of Messina, the sharp range curve as you come up the hill?
You're talking about the airport?
Uh, past the airport.
It starts, um, I, I guess the only curve, the curve you got is the Dishaw's curve.
Yeah, where Pop Brown is and where, uh-
Dishaw's curve, it's forty-five, it's forty-five before there, right now. No, you're out further.
Yeah, you're out five.
Trying to figure out where you are.
I've driven it a couple of times anyway, that is about, about quarter there anyway and, uh, I've had a lot of complaints out there. But I think we should look at it anyway and-
I'm telling you right now, I, I agree, people don't follow the speed limits.
Wow.
Even when you're out there working on the roads, they don't follow the speed limits. And people need to start, they call me, I say, call the state police.
Yeah.
And I have to sit there, but obviously the state police can't sit there all day either, so. It's just as bad on South Racket.
Yeah.
And over there, you got trucks.
I know we've approached this before and I just think we may have a, a better chance at it, uh-
And when there's four foot of snow on the ground, they don't follow the speed limit either, so. No.
But I think that's something we need to look at, maybe get some public comment here that some of the residents have complained about it.